All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our board. We'll go ahead and get started. I call this meeting of the Winthrop School Board to order, so please join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one our God, and in this whole with our King and justice for all.
All right, our roll call here. It looks like we have everyone present except for our one board representative, student representative, who is at soccer tonight. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Winthrop School Board minutes from April 2nd, 2025, as written. Any discussion? All those in favor? Randomist vote. We'll open up to our first comment section. We ask that there are folks whom they may indicate like to comment there, or if you're in the room and would like to speak during public comments, we ask to sit up to the podium and give us your name and your location. No one in the room stepping up. We'll go ahead and close our public comment section and enter into our reports, starting with our superintendent report by Dr. Foley.
Thank you. This evening, I'd like to report the resignation of Jack Khalil, the school nutrition worker at the grade school. I would also like to report the transfer of Holly Stoneton to become our next district gifted and talented teacher effective for next year. We're very excited to give Holly this new opportunity in her career. The board's next learning opportunity will be on May 21st at the board meeting, when the administrative team will present the last board workshop for the year around safety, which the board requested earlier in the year. Last Friday, I met with Zach Steele from the town council, and we'll be presenting an alternative option for the budget later this evening. And then we also continue to work this year on our evaluation system for all of our subgroups. And today, Colleen Souza, Transportation Director, Megan White and I met with the Transportation Department to get input on a system that we have recently created, which aligns with what we are using for ed techs and other support staff. And we plan to start using this tool for our drivers beginning next year. And this is a pretty short report this evening because I've been in Texas for the past week. And so that concludes my report for the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Foley. Does the board have any questions or comments? Okay. School Board Chair report, I don't really have one for this evening. It's been pretty quiet, other than our negotiations with our support staff. And then some report out on that later. And then Joseph, you're giving us a student representative report? Okay, perfect.
So our third annual Arts and Humanities Night took place last week and was a tremendous success, drawing in over 350 community members. Just enjoyed vibrant coffeehouse-style music setting in the library, a wide variety of student art, delicious international foods served in cafeteria, interactive stations of wearable art, student-made crafts, and engaging performances by both middle and high school. The evening concluded with a powerful and moving performance by the Chor de Coros, bringing the community together in celebration for the arts. Looking ahead, 31 students from the high school, along with chaperones and parents, will be departing from Winthrop High School early Friday for an exciting four-day trip to New York City that we have been planning for a while. This will be an excursion to remember, and we're excited to hear what they have to bring back this trip. Athletics, despite the chilly spring weather, our spring sports teams are in full swing, with the winter baseball team having multiple productive scrimmages, softball team following right behind in suit, and track and field athletes training hard in anticipation for the first meet next week. Girls tennis is competing in a scrimmage today, and both girls' and boys' tennis teams are going through the process of holding challenge matches to determine their varsity lineups this season. Meanwhile, both lacrosse teams are progressing strongly. We're confident that the season will bring continued success for Winthrop on and off.
Thank you, Joseph. Any board comments, questions? Okay. Moving on to our committee reports, starting with finance.
Yes, so we met tonight, discussed a few items. One is, we don't believe we're going to have the votes needed to pass our current budget. So we'll discuss that tonight. At about a 9.24 increase. Again, we'll discuss that later tonight. Financials, we should be okay finishing the year, which is good. Transportation vehicle update, we are, we sent the town the option of buying the vehicle. They declined, so we're going to put it on an auction site and sell the truck. We signed off on warrants 19A, 19B, 20A, 20B, and payrolls 20 and 21. And negotiations are still ongoing with transportation and support staff.
Thank you, Tim. Policy?
You did not meet.
And negotiations, as I said, those are ongoing. We had our meeting last night with support staff, and then we have bus driver mediation on the 28th of April. That's a Monday. Okay, our administrator reports are attached. Do we have anyone presenting?
We do.
Okay. Does the board have any questions regarding the reports that were in our packet? Or any questions, the administrators?
Nope.
Okay. We appreciate you guys writing those up for us. And we'll enter into our old business, starting with the 5.1 FY '26 budget discussion with possible action. And I'll entertain a motion to bring that forward.
So moved.
And discussion?
Yes, so last Friday, I met with Zach Steele, the town councilman. And he doesn't, he does not believe that we have the votes needed from the council to pass the board-adopted budget with an expenditure increase of 10.2%. He requested that I look at the budget and try to bring it in definitely under 10%, and he would prefer it to be closer to an 8%. So we had a great discussion about, you know, why we're asking for certain things. But I did, in your packet tonight, I think there should be a memo hopefully from me that when I looked at this, I feel like we could get it down to 9.24. And we would do this by making the following cuts. Would go, you had reinstated the two teachers at the grade school, and we would go back to my original presentation where we'd cut those two teachers. And we would, right now, we're in a time where we're having meetings on incoming K students. So we would wait until we have all of those meetings done before we would determine for sure where we were going to cut the teachers. I think the fifth-grade teacher is a definite cut because currently we have three fourth-grade teachers. And so if we were to keep four fifth-grade teachers, they would go to having smaller class sizes than they currently have. So I think the fifth-grade teacher is a pretty definite. But we would wait probably for another few weeks when all of those CDC meetings are over to determine where the second grade school cut would come. But even with cutting that, all of the class sizes would still be either at 21 or below that cut. We did, thank goodness, our medical insurance claims came in lower than what we had budgeted. We just got that word on that recently, since the last board meeting. So that's a savings of $26,000. We had an employee reach out to say that she wouldn't need as much medical insurance coverage next year as she currently has. And so there's a savings of $11,243. And Colleen Souza has taken over the Transportation Director. And after, you know, a month of her doing that, I feel confident that we can cut the Transportation Director salary by $20,000. It could be by next year that we'll even cut that further, but I'm just not confident yet in that. So there's a savings of $20,000. And then that brings our, the proposed budget for your consideration down to a 9.24% expenditure.
And questions from the board?
Sounds like good hard work.
Thank you. I think this is something, not only do we have to get it by the council, but we also have to get it by the community. And I just think getting it under 10% will be, you know, I think we'll gain some votes.
Any more board questions or comments? So are we ready to take some action then? All right, I will entertain a motion that the Winthrop-- Oh, I already did that. Yes.
One motion that I think--
We have these.
Yeah, I think-- That's in each of your packets.
A few, we have our, our old business with the number five at the top. The 5.1, the Winthrop School Board motion to approve the 2025 to 2026 school operating budget. That the 2025 to 2026 school operating budget, not including nutrition and adult education allocations for the town of Winthrop, be approved in the total amount of $14,694,877. And that the superintendent be authorized to present that budget to the council. Okay. All right, we're just gonna, you're first and seconded on this one. Okay. So at this time, any discussion around that? All those in favor? Okay. 4-0 with one abstention? Okay. And then the next motion. The Winthrop School Board motion to approve the 2025 to 2026 adult education budget. That the 2025 to 2026 adult education budget for the town of Winthrop be approved in the amount of $91,279, including the sum of $58,000 to be raised in support of that budget. And that the superintendent be authorized to prepare and deliver that budget to the council for approval. Take a motion.
Motion or vote?
Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And any discussion at all? Okay, all those in favor?
I need to--
We have a 4-vote, 4-0 vote with one abstention. Okay, and for the next motion, Winthrop School Board motion to approve the 2024 to 2026 school food service and nutrition budget. That the 2025 and 2026 school food service and nutrition budget for the town of Winthrop be approved in the amount of $834,961, including the sum of 0, to be raised in support of the budget. And that the superintendent be authorized to prepare and deliver that budget to the council for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion on that? Okay, and all those in favor?
Abstention.
We have unanimous vote, sorry, a 4-0 vote. So student representative voting in favor, and then one abstention. Okay, thank you very much for your support. We will move into our second item of old business, 5.2, to approve the following policies for second read. AC, nondiscrimination, equal opportunity, and affirmative action. ACAa, harassment of students, harassment of students. ACAa-r1, student discrimination and harassment complaint procedure. ACAa-r2, student sex discrimination and sexual harassment complaint procedure. ACAB, harassment of school employees. ACAB-r1, employee discrimination and harassment complaint procedure. ACAB-r2, employee sex discrimination, sexual harassment complaint procedure. EEA, student transportation, employee requirements, training, and responsibilities.
So moved.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Is there any discussion?
I'm putting--
Yes, I wanted to just put forward, I actually wanted to make a motion to send these back for correction and further discussion. The AC, all the ACs.
And so this is something that policy committee-- Used up.
Yes, I'm asking to send them back for further discussion and correction.
And Monica, you're the chair of that committee. Are you on board with that? Or I'm not sure what you mean.
Because they're not in compliance, and there's some other issues. So I'd like to send them back so that we can further discuss them and make corrections to those policies.
Yeah, or maybe we could first have Ivy say what she doesn't feel like is in compliance, and I think that would help.
Well, just understanding the Title IX, understanding further of that and MHRA, the corrections that we have made still include, still recognizes the MHRA. So it doesn't fully go back as has been directed by, whatever that administrate, the president has asked it to go back. So it doesn't reflect the changes the federal government has asked. Our state is supporting the MHRA part of it. And if you look at what that is, so right now, the part that the state is fighting to keep in causes one right and can cause one right over another, enforce competing rights. So therefore, because there's a conflict, the MHRA, it then pushes Title IX policies, or federal, to trump state. So it's a bit of a dilemma. So it'd be nice to go back and further discuss this to ensure that we're making the right choices and decisions regarding this policy for our community.
You have, you have two separate policies as a school board. You have the Title IX regulation policies, which are the ACAa policies. And then in addition, you have your policy, which is JBR, which is your transgender participation policy. So those are two separate policies that you have as a school board. You, according to the school board policy, JBR, you are following currently the human rights, the main human rights campaign. So they're two different things. I think where things get confusing for people right now, and I understand it is, it is a heated topic. The Title IX regulations are separate from what is considered, if I can understand what you're asking about Ivy, is the current hot-button topic of transgender athletes. I just want to make sure that that's--
No, I don't get into the political part of it.
Okay.
Politics don't belong in the school system. I'm talking about that, the original Title IX, which I couldn't find my copy because I have some mom things to take care of. But you guys, we're still including gender identity and everything, which is still part of all of that. It doesn't revert back to the original Title IX.
It does.
The original Title IX that we had prior to any changes didn't include that on there.
It does revert to, it does revert back to the original Title IX. Everything that we, that you were there for the meeting for, that we discussed, if you can give me a second, I will find. It goes back to, what it does delete is the sex stereotypes and the sex characteristics. Those are the things that it takes out. It keeps in everything that was in the previous 2020 regulations from the Title IX policies.
So it's not, and I'm just asking if we can send it back for further discussion. To make the--
That's not up to-- I understand what you're asking. That's not up to me. I'm just here to answer the questions. The policies that I brought to you and the policy committee, which I believe you were a part of, because you were in the meeting with me, go back exactly to what we had prior to the 2024 regulations. You are correct that, that if this came to topic, some of the federal regulations do not meet up with the state regulations in a different policy. However, if we want to be in compliant with the federal regulations, we need to adopt back to the 2020 regulations. If we don't, and we have some sort of case, we will still have to follow the 2020 regulations or will be in federal violation. So if, I mean, I can't advise beyond what I'm, what I've just said.
So just, so maybe, Ivy, you're talking about the conflict. I think the, the main human--
Human rights campaign.
And then human rights, the state comes in conflict.
Correct.
But that's not part of the policy.
Correct.
Right, so--
Again, I think we discussed this at the previous board meeting. Part of it is dependent on how you interpret policy. Everyone can interpret policy differently and can interpret legal jargon differently, which is why you have court cases. So I think that some people can, people are interpreting language in the regulations to be in conflict with the other policy.
Right.
But these are the 2020 recs.
Correct.
And I think that's what I brought up last time, too. It's kind of what Ivy was saying, because I was confused, too. Because I'm like, well, we're not, this isn't making sense because we're coming in conflict here. But it is two separate policies. So this policy actually, which I think we do need to maybe in policy, talk about the other policy because that's not, that's coming in conflict, which is a separate policy. But I think this policy does follow the 2020.
Correct.
Because I do also have some major issues with especially what happened today with Maine officially being sued, that we, should we have that policy updated?
The one on transgender.
I believe that's the one that's--
That's the JBR, right?
Well--
Or maybe not. It's confusing.
Different school districts, again, I think, different school districts are choosing to interpret policy and regulations in different ways. So if this is going to be a bigger conversation, then I am happy to sit with the board at a policy meeting. But I would ask that if we're going to do that, that you give me time to prepare some information for you. I certainly have the information that I just presented to you. I'm aware of our, of our transgender participation policy that is currently following the Maine Principals Association. However, it is true that recently, the Maine Superintendent's Association is questioning whether or not they want to be in compliance with that or if they want to go a different direction. So we're not alone. We're not an island in this, in this, whatever you want to call it, conflict or this confusion. We are not alone by any stretch of the imagination. Different school districts are doing different things. I can tell you, the last thing I just would like to say is that the school board has hired me to be the Title IX coordinator. Under law, I am required to initiate and follow the current federal regulations, which are the 2020 regulations. If I don't follow those 2020 regulations, then I'm not doing the job that you hired me to do. And also, I would be breaking the law.
Thank you, Alexis. Ivy?
And it's also reversed. If there's anybody that would campaign for diversity rights, I would be definitely front and center as I identify with that community. I know that the Title IX requirements that the federal government has asked us to do is to remove gender identity because it only identifies as male and female. And what we left in our Title IX policy is gender identity, which does not signify either or.
Those were the Title IX regulations that were put in place by President Trump in 2020. They did, the Title IX regulations did include gender identity. There's, they're two different topics.
That's why I'm asking, just that we can set this aside, make those corrections, make sure we're making the right choices and decisions. Because one thing, when it comes to Maine Human Rights Act and Civil Act, is that you can't have competing rights or place one right over another. And there's a lot of concern because when you look at gender and you look at gender identity, it does place competing rights, and it does place one, one gender or one thing over another. And that becomes a big legal issue, and that's my concern. I, being elected for the school board, I try to hold a non-biased and on the best interest of all people, not my personal opinion. And as somebody who does represent the LGBT community, I find a concern with this. And I just would like to have further discussion so that we are making sure that we are extremely diverse and equal across the board so that there is no competing rights nor one right being placed over another. And I'm only asking that we have that discussion and making the right changes before we go and place these in. So I've asked something just simple. Yes, we did have the discussion, and I heard, I, because I'm an advocate in that other world, I did some more digging in, and I just have concerns. And I think we need to make some corrections to ensure that we are complying 100% with everything that we need to do on best interest of all our students.
Thank you, Ivy. Did you want to respond to that?
Well, I just, I'm worried. So I've talked to the policy committee about, there are certain policies that we have a lot of leeway on towards Smith. And there are other ones that are required by law, which is, this is one of them, where we really do not have the leeway towards Smith. So I would still recommend that you vote on the second reading. And if we need to have further discussion and, and we find that there is something wrong that you have identified, Ivy, I'm happy to bring it back and have it corrected. But I just think what you're hearing from Lexi, which I agree with, is that we need to be following the 2020 regs. And so for that reason, usually there's not anything time-sensitive. But in this case, I feel like it is time-sensitive, and I would feel better about the position that we're in if you go ahead and vote for the second read, and then we can still bring it back to policy. So that would be my recommendation.
The, the gender identity and the, I'll just say one more thing, and then I'll only speak if you ask a direct question of me. The difference is that the gender identity in regards to Title IX is saying that you can't harass or mistreat someone based on their gender identity. That's what the Title IX regulations are for. As I explained to teachers and staff when I trained them in regards to the Title IX policies, the Title IX policies are in place, or regulations, and then our policies are in place to make sure that every student who comes through the doors of one of our school buildings feels safe, welcome, understood, appreciated, and feels like this is a place where they're going to be safe getting an education. And that should not, their gender identity or how they identify or what clothes they wear should not interfere with that. That is my role and responsibility. The gender identity, when it comes into action in regards to sports, is not part of Title IX policy. So maybe that will help clarify. Title IX and gender identity is making sure that everyone is treated the same and that I'm not picked on or bullied or harassed because of how I identify. Sports is a separate topic from Title IX.
For that clarification.
You're welcome.
I'll have Monica speak, because you haven't done so yet, then--
Well, because we are voting only on going into the second read, I don't see why we can't do both. I don't see why we can't vote to move this forward for a second read and simultaneously invite Alexis to come and give us a clear understanding of those two policies and what each covers.
Here's another concern I have apart from the gender part. When it comes to filing a Title IX situation from a parent, a child that you file on behalf, there is a subjective and an objective in this policy that erases each other out. And that the child who you're filing upon receives no justice because it zeros out, has a conflict. So that's another thing that I would like to go further into. And maybe you, I can share the information with you, and you could look more into it to ensure that that same conflict is not in this new one that, that we have updated. Because I know we updated some of the wording, but I want to make sure that conflict is not there so that if a child does file Title IX or a staff member, that that subjective and objective doesn't erase out and place that child in between a crack. And that basically the outcome is, doesn't protect the child at all.
So I'm not sure if you're questioning policy or if you're questioning the person who would be doing the investigation and the decision-making.
That's a separate part. I'm talking about the lingo in here because it was the investigator that brought that fight and shared that information, that that policy does make that conflict. It was also something that I had-- It was also something that I had shared prior to you coming on, that the wording conflicted and it, it caused kind of a crack in between. And I mean, I have the wording written down that the investigator had shared. And that's something I think would be great to share with you.
Are you speaking to our, the school board's policy from 2020 or the actual federal regulations? Because the, we've updated from the federal regulations in regards to where, this is why we didn't just go back to everything we had before. We still kept, we continued to move forward. Let me explain this better. The policies as they were when I came on board had not been updated. So we went to the 2024 regulations by federal law. Then we were asked on January 9th, we were supposed to go back to the 2024 regulation, the 2020 regulations. Our regulations had not been completely updated. That's why we kept the policies separated out, R1 and R2, if you recall. And so our current, this current policy that you're voting on tonight is in compliance with the federal regulations. Ivy, what you're speaking to, you might be correct. I'm, I didn't have to ever be a part of those regulations because you hired me after the 2024 regulations came into place. And so I haven't taken a close look at where the policies were prior. But you may be correct because that is why when I went back and redid the policies again, I'm using what the lawyers have given us in regards to, it's kind of like we didn't go back to the 2020 Winthrop regulations. We went back to the 2020 federal regulations. Have I explained that in a way that makes sense?
Yep. And I'm pretty sure it's, it's our policy, the wording that was in there. And that's just another thing that I want to ensure that we're making right. Because it's, it's very important that if there is an investigation that needs to be launched, that a child doesn't get placed in that conflicting situation where it's, they have no justice or no corrective action that can be taken.
Well, then I would--
So I'd like to be able to get that lingo so that we can make sure that what we changed it to--
I would recommend then that the board vote on these policies as presented, as, as already having a first reading, meeting the policy committee and then vote on them tonight because at least what you have is about 80% closer. I would say it's 100% closer, but perhaps there's something I'm missing that Ivy, I would love for you, if you could please send that to me in writing. If there's something you want me to look at, I'm happy to look at that. But you are going to be much closer in compliance with federal regulations if you pass this tonight than if you don't. If you decide to table this and wait for another time, then another two weeks or perhaps four weeks will go by and we will, we won't be compliant. And again, I will still have to do my job. So if something comes up, I will, I will follow the 20 regulate, I will follow the 2020 regulations. That is my job. But it would certainly be helpful to know that the board supported following the federal regulations.
Thank you very much for that.
Can we make a motion to include that there'll be further discussion to make any amendments or corrections that need to after that discussion?
Oh, I think that's more policy committee. You guys decide amongst yourselves which policy. So at this time, we'll close out this discussion and we'll take a vote for those who are all in favor of the policy or the changes. Okay. There is no new business. And we have our second public comment section. If there are folks in the room or those on Zoom who'd like to speak, stepping up to the podium or let us know online. No one online? Okay, close out our second public comment section and head into school board comment. Anyone like to come on the board? Yes, Monica?
I would like for us to bring forward the topic of bullying in our district. And I'm not quite sure how, you know, how to address it. But I want it to come before the board so that we know what kinds of programs we currently have going. Perhaps we do a survey or find out in another way, you know, how much of a problem it is. I'm hearing that it is a serious problem. So I'd like for us to look more closely at that to make sure that we are doing what we can.
So that will be part of our safety workshop because to me, safety is not just physical safety, but it's also social and emotional safety. So you will be hearing more about that on May, I think, 21st. And we would welcome your questions at that time, once we kind of do the presentation.
Anyone else with support, any comment?
I have a suggestion for future agenda. I'm asking that the policy committee look at that JJR, I can't, whatever it was, transgender participation policy at JBR. Look at it and bring it to the board meeting.
Any other comments? Okay. We have no executive session. So actually, no, I didn't want to speak. They had included in our packet the top 10. Recognizing them and their achievement. I thought that was very nice, read about all of them. I didn't recognize that in our initiative reports. But I do want to let you know that I see those and appreciate those being up for.
And we have one of those top 10 right here with us as representatives. So I just want to point that out. Congratulations, Joseph.
Okay. I was reading adjourned at 37.